All right, and we'll call the meeting to order. Mike, if you can do roll call.
Sure, I will start with Counselor Moore.
Hello.
Counselor Thompson.
I'm here.
Counselor O'Trully.
I'm here. Good evening, all.
Counselor Paulson.
Here.
And President Fender.
Here.
So we have all present with the exception of Mr. Gibson and Mr. Black who have resigned.
And I do know Mr. Gibson is planning on attending unless something came up. So we will just so Sally forth without him. Dave has said he will not be attending tonight. And so let's go over, do we have any other agenda items, Mike, that we need to get to? We're not doing any other items, right?
No other business except asking some questions, getting some feedback, and then Council can consider it the next year.
Okay, so we have three fabulous applicants for two open positions. And previous to this evening, we have circulated a set of 12 questions. The same questions will be asked of each of the three candidates. There really isn't a way to do this in this format that doesn't provide some kind of advantage at some point to someone. So what we have done is we have split the questions up and we will ask them in different orders. So and we will each be asking questions of the candidates prior to most of you joining, but still while recording. My trustee assistant pulled three names out of the hat randomly. And that is the order of the questions. So candidate one is going to be Joe Casanova. Candidate two is Mark Manilis and candidate three is Lori Petrie. So just for everyone's reference, that's the order of how we'll go through the questions. And we'll live, we'll leave it just for a second to allow Mayor Gibson to come online. Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, how you guys doing?
We're doing good. Thank you. And so we just went over, excuse me, I just went over kind of how we're going to format the evening. Joe is candidate one, Mark is candidate two, and Lori is candidate three. And we've figured that out by having my son pick names out of a hat. So with that, Mayor, do you have any, any words that you would like to impart on us before we get started?
I know, I just a quick question on the order of the questions now. One document I saw said that I was to ask question number one and Dave was to ask question number two. But of course, he's not here. So who's handling number two?
I was gonna handle number two unless you want to do it.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, so well, you'll do your number one, I'll do Dave's and then the one that I signed to myself. And then we can go forward. If anyone doesn't remember what their question is, I will happily tell you because I have it right in front of me. So.
I have mine in front of me and I think that's correct. So I'm good to go.
Perfect. All right. And then I think at the end, you know, I I guess point of order, Mike, when will we have time? We're gonna have time set at the beginning of the next council meeting to discuss amongst ourselves or discuss openly, I mean, but right, is that? Okay. You're on mute, but I
The idea is that, you know, we ask the questions, take notes, and then at the next council meeting, you'll have the discussion on the appointment. And the council can vote to appoint the successful candidates at that point in time.
All right, so that's what we'll do. All right, Mayor, I'll hand it over to you and Joe. So how we're going to do this is each candidate is going to be asked three questions. So Joe's gonna get asked his first set of three, then we'll move to candidate two for their first set of three. And then we'll move to candidate three for the next set of three questions. All right, there are four rounds. Here we go.
Right now, I'm promoting them to panelists so that they can point in. Lori, Joe, Mark, you should see an offer to join as a panelist at this point in time. Now you should be able to start your radios.
All right, I see Joe.
Right, I'm here.
How are you?
I'm good. How about yourself?
Okay, there's Lori and Mark. Okay.
And at this point, Counsel, I'm handing this off to you guys and I will just be chilling here, listening and taking notes if necessary. You need me, give me a call or I'll be here.
All right, that sounds good. So Joe, it sounds like you're up first. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Thank you for applying.
Yeah, and thank you for this opportunity.
Okay, all right, the first question, I get the distinct pleasure of asking the first question. And it's a pretty simple one. I'd like for you to tell us something about yourself and some of your community activities.
Right, so I am, I am sort of semi-retired, working on contract assignments for business optimization. I've been in the utility space for about two decades, worked at most major utilities around the country. And I am a mechanical engineer, professional project manager, and a Lean Six Sigma Master Black Belt. So I can bring both, three aspects of the business into it. From a business perspective, I've run organizations and huge departments into multi-billion dollar organizations. I've ran capital projects and large infrastructure upgrades, I mean, in many areas of the country. And also then bring the business part of the Lean Six Sigma, which is all about business optimization, about making things like more, more efficient and reducing waste. And I've been in the, in this community for about just two and a half years. And after the first six months, I've been intimately involved in this community. And I've both served in the, initially served in the Architectural Review Committee. And then by default became the president of the Edgewater Community. And as most of you know, I pulled it from, from like a major financial disaster into what it is today. And I've also been involved as a planning commissioner. And again, I walk the talk and I'm definitely a contributor to this community and want to carry on doing so.
Okay, well, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it very much. Jamie, you're muted.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of our three candidates, we are going to ask a set of three questions to each of you and then move on. I don't know if you heard that preamble at the beginning, but so Joe, based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider the city's strengths and challenges?
Well, I think, I think the biggest strength that the King City has is really opportunity to, to expand and actually have a say in it. So we have, you know, like this community has grown over the years and now we have a huge opportunity to actually make a big impact in the neighboring community. So I think that's a really fantastic opportunity, luck, luck for the city.
Thank you. And Smart, you're up next.
Right, thank you, Jamie. Joe, again, I just want to repeat what the mayor said. Thank you for your, for putting your hand up to run for this position and really appreciate you being here today. So I have the next question for you. You have given us some background in your application and discussion here. What do you feel that you are bringing to the council and the communities of King City?
Well, what I bring to the council is really, really a, really like sort of balanced, like business sense. I make decisions based on fact. I'm a contributor and I also make decisions, you know, in terms of putting, of putting teams together. I've worked across many parts of the world remotely, right, bringing, bringing different teams together in accomplishing things. So I just feel that my project management skills and be able to coordinate and liaison between the different parties, understand the different stakeholders, understand the contribution, and really getting, get everyone involved in it. Again, so that's where I really, my biggest strengths are. I've been involved in sort of storm restoration of communities when there's been huge power outages because of storms, whether it be snow or, or hurricanes and things like it. I've been involved in that. In fact, I've been most recently involved in the, in the fires in Tahoe. I mean, that's the company that I'm currently working for. And again, just putting all the, all, all like the logistics together. This is from accommodation, food provisions, looking after the community and so on. So when, in times of crisis, I'm, I'm a really like dependable person.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. All right, Joe, that was your first three. So we're gonna move on to candidate number two, who is Mark Manilis. And then Smart, you're up again.
All right, thank you, Jamie. For also putting your hand up for this position. Really appreciate you coming today for this, this session we're going through. So what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of King City in the next two years?
Thank you, Smart. So I think the three are gonna be the upcoming elections in 2022. There's what, I think, two or three, no, there'll be three seats at least, which could help shape for the future of King City and how what the vision is for the residents and what they feel they want to see. The Kingston Terrace Expansion, probably one of the biggest foremost on everyone's mind. And, you know, looking at a way, since we are a small city, what avenues can be looked at to increase tax revenues?
Thank you.
Mark, Micah, you're next.
Thank you. Thank you all for, for volunteering to, to join the council and for your participation today. My first question is, on average, city council members attend approximately 60 meetings a year. This includes council meetings, committees, board meetings, and training. Are you willing to commit the time needed to participate in these meetings?
Yes, and my, my schedule is pretty flexible. I set my own schedule. I do have a few meetings during the month that are, are set that I wouldn't be able to. But other than that, my work schedule, I, I set pretty much and I work from home and I go into works. So I'm pretty flexible.
Great, thank you. Then next question that I have is that city councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you or a decision that you've made?
Absolutely. You know, I've been on the planning commission for four years. So I have a pretty, pretty thick skin. I can take criticism constructively and I like to talk through it. Let's listen and, and discuss and talk. You know, you have to bring ideas to the table. It may be a criticism at first, but then we can all turn it into, hey, this idea was something that they had and we turn it into a positive. And, and go from there. It's, you know, just talking, I think, is a big thing to talk it out with people.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Now Lori, you're next. And I will say, this, this setup is a little awkward. There's no perfect way to do this. So Mark, you and Lori will get to give a little introduction to yourself. A little bit later, we, of course, all know who you are, all of you. So it's, it's not that dramatic, but I, I acknowledge it's a little awkward. So with that, Lori, Kate is gonna ask you your first question.
Hi there, Lori. Hi, Mark. Hi, Joe, and everybody else. Lori, your first question is pretty broad. What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
Such a great question, you know. Thank you, guys. So in jotting a couple of things down to just thinking about this, I thought, you know, the, the main thing that I see right now that, that I would like to be involved with and, and work on is, is seeing the master planning completed and implemented and seeing what's really gonna be taking place in our expansion area. I think that's gonna be a huge thing. And one of the things that I want to kind of emphasize in what, where I'm coming from is I think we need to improve communication in the community. So one of the things I would like to see accomplished as a councillor member is to find ways to improve communication with our residents. Whether that's, you know, we've, we've talked about different kinds of media, or maybe it's just a person-to-person walking around, talking to people and reaching out to the various communities we have here and finding ways to, to just improve the level of communication with the residents. So those are the main things that, that I'm thinking about here.
Thank you. Extending past our city, what kinds of relationships do you think our city should have with neighboring jurisdictions?
You know, I, my sense is, without personal experience with this, my sense is that we have good working relationships with the surrounding jurisdictions. And that is obviously something we want to continue to maintain, especially as we are working on our expansion and we're gonna have talking with Tiger to Crossbeef Bend and Sherwood and all of those. I just think that, I think the relationships are good and just we need to be expanded upon.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Kate. Now Shawna, you're next. Do you need one of us to take it while you're driving or are you good?
Oh, I'm good. Thank you. I memorized my question. We'll see how I do.
Perfect.
So bear with me. My, my first question's a two-part question, Lori, and it is, what is your view on a scale of one to five, five being the highest? What is your view or perception of how King City is doing as far as sustainability practices for its businesses and its residents as well?
This was such an interesting question because I thought, you know what, I don't think I know what the city is doing. So on a score of one to three, I would have to say we're probably doing our best and hanging in there, but maybe we're a three. I don't know. As far as improvements, and I don't know what other businesses are doing. I mean, I was thinking about this and, for example, in, in KCCA, we are a corporation. One thing we're doing that I think is a, is a good business practice is we use recycled water for the golf course. And we've been switching all of our, all of our lighting systems through all of our buildings and our parking lots over to LED. I think of those things. What other businesses are doing? I don't really know. So I really can't speak to improvements, but it sounds like an intriguing thing that needs to be pursued. So I'm excited about that.
So that's a great answer. If you had the opportunity to find out or improve upon it, how would you do that?
Well, I think that, you know, if we're gonna, we need to identify what the issues are. First of all, we don't know what the businesses are doing or what we think would be important for businesses to do. So those would be the steps that we would have to be taking as a council is if we identify things that we think are important to our city going forward. And then we can reach out to our businesses and see where they are in that, in relationship to that list. So it's gonna be a process we have to go through, but it's not gonna just, just suddenly appear. So yeah, it's, it could, it could be an interesting thing to pursue for sure.
Okay, thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. So Joe, we're headed back to you now and Shawna is gonna ask you your next question.
Oh, it's back to me. How are you?
I'm good.
What did you do during the first six months in your new role if you were to be appointed?
The first six months, if I had to be appointed, I would try and get involved in as many communication outlets as possible, just for people to get to know me and for me, for me to be able to listen what people have to say in the community.
Perfect. Thanks, Joe. All right. Now I am up. So Joe, what do you hope to learn in the first six months in our community? What, what do you, I guess another way, what do you expect our community to teach you?
Well, the, the one thing I want, I want you to learn is obviously getting a bit more understanding of all the protocols that happen in King City as well as, as the protocols that happen between the neighboring, the neighboring cities and counties and so on. I think that's obviously my first sort of priority. The, this, the second piece of it is really to understanding, well, you know, what are the current issues at hand and not only the King City's issues, because I don't believe that we are an island and we, we can be impacted and affected by other communities. So getting, so again, so getting a presence in attending other community forums, just, just to hear what's going on and understand and maybe get a good, a good sense, wha- what is the, what is the probability of consequence of any of those decisions, how they will, how would they be impacting us?
Thank you for that. And then knowing King City has a limited tax base, $2.15 per 1,000 of assessed value. This includes the police levy at .63 cents or 63 cents, as it's otherwise known. Are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
Sorry, increase, you say reduce or increase funding or spending?
So it says where, areas where you would reduce or increase funding. So either or.
Well, until, until I have a good understanding how, how, how the budgets have been allocated. And, and again, you're going from my professional career is you need to have a good, good understanding what the historical spend is and also the forecast demand for that expenditure. And again, determine, you know, what value are you getting for the money that you're spending? That's number one. Then the number two, I would definitely look for other, other venues or other, other sort of work streams where we, where we can get some revenue. And again, it's all about, it's all about like the publicity, I mean, community publicity and things like, for example, like a road race, right? There are, you know, there is work that needs to get involved, but, but you can get some decent revenue like coming out of those activities like that. So, so those, those would be two things that I would approach it from either end.
All right, thank you. Now we're gonna move on to Mark, back to you for your second round of questions. And Shawna is asking your first question.
You're muted.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, no, and I apologize. Shawna is not asking your first question. Ken, you are asking the first question. I apologize.
Okay, I'm asking the first question and Mark is up.
Correct, you're asking, you're asking number, question number one of Mark.
Okay, Mark, you didn't officially introduce yourself, but the question is, tell us something about yourself and some of the things that you've done in the community in terms of activities.
Right. Thanks, Ken. Nice to see you from across the way. Yeah. So I've, I've worked as in a facilities maintenance manager for over 10 years. I've worked with some very large companies here locally and then some that are Fortune 100 and 500 companies. And I've been on the planning commission for four years. It'll be, what, five years in March. So then, been pretty active with the city and doing that. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Based on your experience or general awareness of the city, what do you consider the city's strengths and challenges?
Right, thanks, Jamie. So I, you know, I think being a small city, it's right, both a strength and a challenge. You know, the strength is that you're small, you're efficient, it works well. Everyone, you know, from city staff to the council, to the planning commission, to the budgeting commission, everyone works together and works well. And then the challenge, you're small, right? It's fewer resources, less staff. You know, you just have to look outside or think outside of the box to try and figure things out and get, get it accomplished.
Thank you. And now Smart.
All right, I have the next question for you, Mark. So you've given us some background in your application and this discussion. What do you feel that you are bringing to the council and the communities of King City?
Thanks, Smart. And, you know, being a good, effective listener, negotiating skills, budgeting and communicating. Like I said before, I like to, to sit down and talk. And, you know, that's a, a good way to, to to come to a mutual agreement, even if you're not on the same field. The agreement might still become mutual. So that's one of, one of the things I really like to do is get out and talk and, and you know, you get a good pulse of what's happening in the, in the community and with the citizens and what people want to see and what they don't want to see. So.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right, up next now, Lori, we're back to you. And Smart, you're asking our next set of questions or our next question.
Thank you, Jamie. Lori, I have a nice question for you. So what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of King City in the next two years?
So when I thought about this, to me, the number one, of course, is the, the master plan and, and the expansion area and how that's going to be working out. And we know that's a long range thing, but there's gonna be, this next couple of years is gonna be really heavy on getting the planning going on that and how we're gonna implement it. The second thing I thought about was, again, when I go back to the improving communication. So I think that's a really a big deal that we have to work on here. And number three is this really basic thing that we've been playing with and trying to figure out what to do, and that's street repairs. I think it's really gonna come to a head here with the, our residents. And I think those, those, those things are the things I see as the most important things in the next two years.
Thank you.
You. And up next, we have Micah.
Lori, so my questions are, on average, city council members attend approximately 60 meetings a year. This includes council meetings, committees, board meetings and training. Are you willing to commit the time needed to participate in those meetings?
I absolutely am ready to commit to that. I will be cutting back on my current commitments to KCCA in order to do that because I'm probably spending at least, I hate to even tell you this, I feel like I have an unpaid job. Spending way more hours on my, at this HOA than I ever thought I ever would. I see Joe nodding his head so he knows that I'm talking about. So I have to cut back on that a little bit, but believe me, this, I am perfectly ready to take on this time and commitment. So.
Great. And then city count, as asked earlier, city councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made?
Well, I live in that world at KCCA every day. So to be honest, what I've learned is that people are gonna have their opinions and you listen to them, you make them feel like they've been heard. A lot of that time, that's all that people really want to do. And those that continue to be critical, there's nothing you can do to change their mind. So all you can do is continue giving them the facts and being the truth. As one person said to me at one point, everyone's entitled to their own opinion, but they're not entitled to their own facts. So that's kind of how I look at these things and, you know, you just can't let it get to you. Trust me, doesn't work. So that's kind of my philosophy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. And now, Joe, back to you for our round three questions and Kate will get us started.
Okay, Joe, what would you like to accomplish as a council member?
Okay, Joe, what would you like to accomplish as a council member?
And I would like to accomplish being instrumental in leading some environmental friendly projects across the community, but again, not isolated to King City, but where, where we are intertwined with other neighboring committees. So you sort of kind of sort of start small, but, but then your sort of small plan has like a long-term vision of where, what it is that we want to do in sort of years to come. So I'm all about, you know, I'm, I'm a big natural nature lover, so having, having trails and places that people can just sort of sit and listen to nature and that kind of environmental awareness is what I really like to have a stake in saying.
Thank you. And it, you kind of alluded to neighboring communities. What do you think our relationships should be with jurisdictions that surround us?
I think I sort of lightly mentioned this before, you know, like King City is surrounded by other communities, so we cannot, we cannot think as ourselves as an island, and we have to intertwine with other communities. And the more that we do and understanding what it is they're doing, because what they're doing is going to impact us at some level or form or, or by or like a severity. So, so again, it is just important that we know what the other communities are doing and how that could impact us, because that they could absolutely also assist us when needed decisions that we need to make. Again, just about, again, just about understanding the facts of things and understanding the consequences of what is happening in the other neighboring communities around us.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Shawna, you're asking our next question.
Hello again, Joe.
Hi.
Okay, so here's the sustainability question for you. So on a scale of one to five, five being the highest or best, how do you think King City's businesses and residents are doing as far as sustainability practices?
And I'm not too familiar or know what's, what's really going on about sort of sustainability, but things that we, again, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm actually applying this at Edgewater right now, which is the, the water conservation project, which I started about a year ago. So I think the city can definitely look at things of that nature in, in a, in a broader level as well. But again, I do not know right now what the current sort of situation is, what the current evaluation is about since city, I mean, King City, and, and how does that relate to other communities?
Okay, I think you answered part B of my question on that as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. All right, Mark, we will move on to you for a round three questions, and Shawna has your first question.
I muted myself. Okay. So we're going back to Mark and number 10, sorry. I just got destination, so now I can actually, I think number 10 was really, okay. What would you do during your first six months during office?
During the first six months, I'm going to do a lot of listening. With that, you know, listen to the citizens, go out and talk, and then see what ways we can work to increase revenues in the city. This, I think that's going to be one, one big impact, since it is a small city going forward, what, what, what things we're going to have to look at to help keep the city vibrant and flourishing, especially on a financial side.
Great, thanks, Mark.
All right, Mark, um, what do you hope to learn from our community in the first six months, or what do you expect it to teach you?
You know, I want to learn and, you know, how vibrant King City is, can be, you know, I think it feels not vibrant right now, because a lot of people are still locked in, but, you know, I think especially like with a lot of the people going to the golf course and just getting together and, you know, trying to get that, hopefully we can safely sometime soon get that back out. You know, and like I, I think my theme is, is listen, see what, what the community wants and, you know, be an advocate of, you know, as long as facts back what they want, then I'll advocate for it.
Thank you. And then knowing that King City has a limited tax base, we referred to it earlier at, it's $2.15 for every 1,000 assessed value, and this includes our police level levy at 63 cents. Are there specific areas that you would reduce or increase funding?
I think I really need to take a dive into the budget, see what is where, understanding where revenue is coming from, how much, you know, all the different areas that, that revenue does come in, because property tax is a part of it, probably the largest. And then also get out, talk with the landowner at Fisher and 131st, and then Randall's Bike Shop, see if he's got any one coming in, because that could be a huge property tax revenue base right there, just from those two pieces of property. And then with Kingston Terrace, there'll be some coming in from that, but with, with our current situation, those would be two, I think, reaching out to that landowner at Fisher and 131st especially, and see, you know, if he's, if he's stumbling, maybe we can reach out to another developer and get that spurred to get that going, so we can bring some, some revenue in.
Thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
All right, Lori, now we're going to your set of questions, and this is the exciting part where you can introduce yourself in a moment. Just, you know, only 39 minutes in, but I'll hand it over to Ken to kind of take us away with his first question. Ken, you're on mute.
Uh, thank you, Lori. Thank you for being here. I just want you to tell us a little bit about yourself and I think you've already talked about some of your activities, but restate what your activities have been and a little bit about yourself.
Well, let's see here. So currently I'm retired, as you all know, but I had a, quite a lengthy career in transportation. And that time gave me the opportunity to see quite a bit of the world, a lot of Asia. Had opportunities to travel to, to China and Thailand and the Philippines and Japan and Singapore. And these were all courtesy of the airlines that I was doing business with. So, you know, I was pretty lucky. I had a really lucky time. And since retiring, we moved here in 2013, my husband and I, because we wanted to get out of Portland. And kind of thought, what's sure I was going to be doing after that? So someone suggested getting involved with the HOA. So I found out a little bit about that. Ran for office, got elected, spent four years on the board of my garden, and Garden Villas, three years as president. Then I, someone suggested I might be interested in the planning commission. So in 2016, I was appointed to the planning commission and I've been on that ever since. Also in there, in 2019, someone also suggested, once again, I'm getting, I guess I'm taking too many suggestions here, but it was, I was kind of recruited to run for KCCA. So I did run for KCCA in 2019, and I was elected to that. I'm finishing up my third year on the KCCA board. So I have found myself pretty much involved in local government issues. And that's been a good thing, you know, because I still am an optimistic person. I think I maybe I can make a difference in the world. So, you know, I'm not jaded totally yet. People try and change me all the time, but you know, I'm trying to hang on to a little bit of of that half, half-full philosophy in, in, in my life. But, so that's kind of a, just generally what I've been doing for the last eight years.
All right. Thank you, Lori, very much. I appreciate it.
All right. So Lori, based on your experiences and your general awareness of the city, what do you consider King City's strengths and challenges?
This, this is a great question, because the first thing that came to my mind is the size, the size of the city. We're small enough to be accessible and to be able to provide personal services, such as having our own police force, which not, a lot of cities our size don't have that. But at the same, on the flip of the coin, the challenge, the challenge is our size. We are small. We have less revenue, we have less resources to work on some of the things we need to, to accomplish here. So that's going to be our ongoing yin and yang here in King City, especially when we go into, start working on the expansion. Is this going to be an ongoing which, which thing is going to take precedence, but, but those, that's what I saw here.
Thank you. And Smart, you're up next.
All right, thanks, Jamie. So I have the next question for you, Lori. Again, thank you for putting your hand up to run for this position. So you have given us some background in your application and in this, during this, because of this discussion. What do you feel that you are bringing to the council and the communicate, and the communities of King City?
To me, the main thing that I'm bringing is the experiences I've had in both my work experience and my experience working on the various boards that I've been on. And that is just learning how to work with people across issues, coming to a consensus, finding solutions, and in, both in a work, work environment and also in a board setting. You have to be able to work with a variety of people. You, you are not going to all agree, and you have to agree that you don't agree sometimes. And that getting, experiencing that and living that basically, I think, is, is a big contribution and something that would be beneficial to the community and the council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lori. All right. So now it, we are moving into our last and final round of our questions. And Joe, you are up next with round four, and Smart, you're asking the next question.
All right, thank you, Jamie. Joe, next question to you is, what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of King City in the next two years?
And the, the three things that I see that are very important to King City, obviously without a doubt, is the, is the Kingston Terrace expansion, like for, for the many reasons that, that we discussed before, but, but then intertwined with that, I really think it's important that we can also use this opportunity to maybe recreate the vision and the mission of King City. And maybe with this, with this king, Kingston expansion, maybe be able to change that into maybe making King City like the gateway to like wine country. So if we can, if we can use that, we're going to, we're going to solve some problems, things like revenues and so on. And, and I also believe that with a vision, and I'm not meant to twine these things, not sort of three separate things. But I believe that with a revival of the vision, if you look at King City was, when it was first established, what, what King City likes to have stood for then, but if you, if you look at the demographic sort of transformations that occurred in our city, that there to me is the opportunity that we have. So I believe those visions could be changed for, again, more families sort of centered, more environmentally friendly, where you have sustainability projects, be able to publicize this gateway to, to, to wine country. And that there, in other words, you're going to take the small, the small community of King City, really to mushroom into all the other areas that we surrounding it. So those are, again, not in one, two, three order, kind of intertwined three things I would look at, or which are important.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Micah already knows he's next, so this is.
All right. So, Joe, thank you as well for, for putting your hat in the ring for this. I really do appreciate everybody who's volunteered for this. So my questions, on average, city council members attend approximately 60 meetings each year. This includes council meetings, committees, board meetings and training. Are you willing to commit the time needed to participate in these meetings?
I certainly am. And, you know, just, I'm just going back to what Lori said early on. As most of you know, when, when I sort of took over the Edgewater community on the HIA side, I have practically, single-handedly, with due respect to my full, full of board members, I've done most of the work in this sort of transformation. And I have, and there's been many weeks that I've spent in excess of 25 hours a week working for nothing else but the HIA. My term is coming to an end now in a couple, couple of months' time, which will obviously will free me up from, from that. And, but again, I believe I put, I put a good structure and foundations in place that people can just take over, just, it just sort of take it from there. So yes, absolutely committed to doing that.
Great. And then my other question is that, you know, as a councillor, sometimes you have to make unpopular decisions. And how will you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made?
Well, in the, in my professional environment, in a lean, in lean six sigma, like sort of transformational agent, I walk into problem areas where it's, where it's never popular and I'm, and I'm really, so I am, I'm a great facilitator, and I facilitated many teams of phenomenal opposing ideas, you know, which bring the table, right? And very challenging luxury facilitated events with people completely opposite viewpoints and how they do, to, how they need to do things. But, but I'm one for brainstorming ideas, with a very collaborative environment. In fact, getting people to invite ideas and provide it, I can take pieces from each, each person so that they, they can feel a contributor. In other words, I'm not, I don't want to be leaving anyone out in doing, in the, in coming to like a decision where things need to be at. If I can share with you, one of the most challenging things I've ever done was bringing two utility companies that are completely opposite viewpoints and how they control emissions into the environment. So completely opposite ways of how, how they manage things. And, and then I'll, I'll, I'll I'll tell you guys a bit later, and on another occasion, how that was done. But, but that to me is probably the most challenging thing I've ever done in my life. And, and I walked out of there with everyone almost, almost like sort of shaking their hands together.
Thank you, Joe. I put my screen up. All right. So Mark, we're going to move on to your last round of questions. And up next is going to be Kate.
What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
How you doing, Kate? I think, you know, I just, I want to get to know, know the residents, listen to, you know, if they have concerns, maybe they have a good vision suggestion. Just through listening, you know, gather insights and information. And then look at ways for projects, you know, how we're going to fund roads, sidewalk repairs that are coming up. I know, I think it was the last meeting, one of the roads that was being repaired, you found there was only two inches of asphalt. How many other roads are not, were not built properly that haven't been repaved in King City, where we're going to have to look deep and, and make unpopular decisions, so things are repaired right. So that's kind of what, what my vision is.
Thank you. What do you think about King City's relationships with other jurisdictions?
And, you know, just from looking on the outside, it looks like the, the mayor's consortium from the surrounding small communities is a really good, and have, you know, way to collaborate and get information. And, you know, one city might be doing something one way, and, and we can adopt that or something similar on, on ideas and a good way to, to share ideas amongst the, the surrounding cities.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
I think I'm next. Hey, Mark.
How are you?
How you doing? Um, so you, this is sustainability. How do you see King City is doing in its role of sustainable practices as far as its businesses, its residences? If you had to rank us on a scale of one to five, five being the best?
I think like all, you know, Joe and Lori have shared, I'm not too familiar with what businesses are doing, and it was nice to learn what KCCA is doing with the recycled water and the golf course and LED lights. You know, so it'd be going around, talking with businesses to see what, what they're doing. Maybe try and partner with someone if they need information or help on what they can do. But I think the resident side, I'd probably give them a four, you know, there's always. But I think the resident side, I'd probably give them a four, you know, there's always room for improvement on, in, in these areas. It does seem like most citizens do their part in recycling. I think that's kind of the Portland way, right? And then I did like, and I can't remember the name of that company that was at the meeting last week that will come around and pick up recyclable items that Pride does not pick up. Hence what? Styrofoam. So we don't have to go to Agilex ourselves, you know? Yeah, we could pay someone a fee to come do that for us. And some of the other recyclable items that Pride can't pick up would be a great option to have for everyone here in King City.
Answered part B of the question as well. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
All right. And then let's see. Shauna, you're up with number 10. Did you just ask?
For Lori? Or is that for Mark?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we are. It's getting a long day, you guys. All right. Lori, we are now moving on to you for number 10, your final round.
Hi, Lori. Once again. Hi. So my question for you is, what would you do during your first six months in office?
This is, to me, this is the time to really get acquainted with the parts of King City that I'm not already acquainted with. And so my hope is to get out into the other communities within King City that I'm not familiar with and get an understanding of the interests of those people and how they relate to the city. That might just mean visiting some more HOAs and seeing how they operate. Or it might be just attending some other kinds of events to try and get to know these, some of these people. But I think it's really important for us to get out and for people to put a face to a name and get an understanding of what we're trying to do. So that, that would be what I hope to do in the first six months.
Great. Thanks, Lori.
All right. Thanks, Lori. And what do you hope to learn in the first six months from our community? What do you expect it to teach you?
I think the, again, this is following up on the same thing. So I'm wanting to learn about the interests of the community, all the different communities that are within the city of King City. And I know there's a lot that I'm not even aware of. And hopefully those folks will feel free to share their concerns, their interests, their goals, all of which can be brought back to the, the council and to the other counselors as part of our conversation on how we go forward with the city and meet some of the goals that we will probably be brainstorming and talking about what our goals are going to be for the next year. So that, I think, is, is what I have hoped to do and would expect to learn in that, in that timeframe.
Thank you. And your last question, knowing King City has a limited tax base. And again, as a reminder, it's $2.15 per $1,000 assessed value. And that includes our police levy of 63 cents. Are there specific areas where you would reduce or increase funding?
This is, this is an interesting question. So I have been participating with and attending and being a member of the Budget Committee for the last couple of years. And I can see firsthand how hard our city staff works to squeeze every penny out of every bit of revenue and makes very conservative decisions on how they spend that money. So I would, I, at this point, I don't have any areas that I would expect to in, in reduce spending or increase spending because I think they have spent so much time putting those budgets together. I've felt very comfortable with their budget work in each budget session that I've been involved with.
Thank you. And with that, that concludes our four rounds. First, I want to applaud you all for your involvement in our community, whether it's, you know, here in official capacity with the city or elsewhere, right? You all three clearly have been called to service and you arise to that occasion. And we certainly applaud you for it and we thank you for that. And we absolutely, there is no wrong decision. I wish I could take, you know, I wish we could just bottle all three of you up and multiply you and then, and then we could really have a, a full team. So there is going to be no wrong decision here, and I have confidence in all three of you. So I just really appreciate your time tonight. I know this was a clunky format, right? Zoom plus everyone sitting here with their own questions. So thanks for, for your patience and getting through the clunkiness with us. And Mayor, I'll, I'll hand it over to you. And you're on mute, Mayor. Your last words, we can't hear.
My, my last words muted out. But, uh, no, this is exciting, you know, and to be able to be in a situation where we can make these appointments. I, from the very beginning, thought this was very, very important to the well-being of the council for every one of you. Whoever is going to be successful, you also eventually going to have to make a decision on whether or not you're going to run for a term. So this is a way of getting, you know, acclimated, getting your feet wet, getting a better understanding of what this commitment really is all about, how this team works together. And I think that's a really, really important thing for us to be able to accomplish. And I have all the confidence in the world that whoever the two successful candidates are is going to be, is going to enhance the council. I really feel that. You guys are strong. You guys are committed. You guys have spent your time working on a variety of different things, especially on the Planning Commission, your activity with HOAs and just being involved in the community is, is a great training ground. And I wish all of us had that opportunity to work as a planning commissioner and all those things prior to becoming a counselor. I just think it's a great pathway to really being strong and have a better understanding of what the city needs, what the residents need, and I think it's going to be great. So I, I, I'm retiring, but I'm retiring with a whole lot of confidence that this is a great team. I already knew that, but it's just going to get even better. I just really feel that. And I thank you guys for all that you've done and all that you're going to do. So I wish you all the best and thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And with that, I think the last, I, I just have one final question, which is wherever Shauna is, it's sunny and I look outside and it's pitch black. So Shauna, do tell.
It actually just started raining, but I'm.
Oh. Well, Shauna, thank, oh, beautiful. Look at that. Well, we are jealous and we appreciate you and your time coming in tonight. And I just want to also extend on behalf of the entire council, our condolences to Mike and thank you for joining us tonight. I'm, we're very sorry for your, your first family loss. And so I won't take up any more time tonight. I'll entertain a motion for us to conclude so we can all go on our way.
I move to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor, we're going to say, everyone's going to raise your hand, and I know it's unanimous, and we will go with that, Mayor. Goodbye, everyone.
Adjourned.
Happy New Year.
Appreciate, happy New Year to all.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, guys.
Hey, Mike, what's going on?
Oh, my, I had to put down my dog this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, she wasn't doing so hot. That's Ronnie calling me. But, yeah, I just, she, her liver was failing, failing her and she was losing last few days, so had to take her down to the vet this morning.
Well, I'm sorry. That's part of the family. I understand that. You know, so sympathies to you and the rest of the gang over there, okay?
All right. Thanks, Ken. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. I will be talking to you.
All right. Congratulations on the retirement.
It's, it's feeling pretty good, you know? So I, how is this? Now, I, I participated, but I won't participate in the final decision because I will, I'm officially retiring on Friday.
Yeah.
I need to give you guys some input or?
Yeah, you could just forward whatever your input is to Jamie and, you know, or just write it up and email to everybody. That'd be fine.
Okay. Just pick my two people and just give that input and we'll be good to go.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. All right.
They did pretty good answering those questions.
I think they did, you know, you know, we can't go wrong.
Right, yeah. I think that's the truth. You can't go wrong.
I, I, I think it's going to be good. And I'm really excited about Lori being on there representing the KCCA. That's my top candidate right now.
Yeah, she did really well. She had a really, a couple of really great answers, so.
Yeah, she did. She did. So, okay. Well, listen, enjoy and Happy New Year. And, you know, we'll see what 2022 brings.
Hopefully lasted this. That's sad days, you know, I could use some happy days, so. All right, buddy. Hey, have a Happy New Year, okay?
All right. Same to Crystal, okay?
Will do. Will do. Take care.